Good afternoon, I'm Bob Toomey. Welcome to our Candidates' Forum. Today we have our candidates for the Planning Board. And with me are Rick Collins and Cliff Jacob. These are two candidates for one position on a ballot for April 26th. Polls are open from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That's a sad day at the high school. We have a great audience here. I hope people can just control themselves, keep the volume down while we ask the candidates the questions. Normally I'd stop. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. It is a town event, so please. [applause] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This was late in coming together because of my particular schedule. It's kind of a last-minute thing. But please keep in mind that these candidates are vying for an unpaid position. So no matter what your opinions are, of their opinions or of their decisions, keep in mind that they're taking time away from their business and work, from their family and their social life, to help improve the quality of life for the residents of Abington. So even if you see these fellows on the street, if you want to talk to them, please be civil, because again, they're taking valuable time away from their families to help make our quality of life an improvement. So, thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for volunteering to run for this position. I appreciate it, and I'm sure most people in town do as well. Our forum is, we won't take any questions from the audience. We've had questions written down. We'll start with an opening statement from Rick, and then an opening statement from Cliff. Then we alternate questions, so no one candidate's always first, no one candidate's always second. And then once, we have four questions that have been sent in. Once those questions have been answered, we'll give each candidate a closing statement time, you know, two or three minutes or so, and then that'll be the end of it. We're unable to do the Board of Health at this point. That's the only election office that's being vied for by more than, more candidates than seats. If I have time in the next couple of days, we'll try to get them on, but at this point I don't expect it. We've already done the Selectmen, we've already done School Committee, and now we're doing the Planning Board. So, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Opening statement from Rick Collins.
Great. Thank you very much, Bob, for putting this together, and thank you, Mr. Jacob, for turning out and your participation in this race, again. My name is Rick Collins, and I'm a resident on Orange Street. I live there with my wife and my son Ricky. And when we were looking for a place to buy our first home, we wanted a community that had a lot of community spirit, where we could have, you know, parks, where we could have places to walk, where we had a lot, you know, schools nearby, and we found that in Abington, and we've been very happy with our decision. And my wife and I also believe strongly in the need for volunteerism and giving back to the community, which is why we volunteered in the past to work on sage cleanup days and on the police race and other events. And I'm very happy about this opportunity to run for the Planning Board. A little bit about my background, I think I have a unique background. For many years, I was a reporter and spent countless hours sitting in Planning Board and Zoning Board and Conservation Commission meetings, going over plans, understanding that there's a need to go beyond just what the developers are telling you, that it's important to hear the concerns of the neighbors and the butters, as well as developing an appreciation for the open meeting law and the need to conduct hearings in a fair and transparent manner. I also spent time working in the Massachusetts State Senate, first as an aide to Senator Bob Headland, and then as an aide to Senator John Keenan. During that time, I spent, I was involved in housing and economic development policy. I served on the, I helped with the investigation into 40B that helped uncover abuse within the program. And currently, I work for a marketing company. I think that working for the Planning Board really takes advantage of my expertise and my, and my skills, and I'm really excited about the opportunity to run for the Board. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Mr. Cliff Jacob?
Thank you, Bob.
Rick.
My name is Clifton Jacob. I'm the son of Cliff Jacob Senior and Marilyn Jacob. And John Jacob, I've been asked a long time, is he my brother? Yes, he is. I'm one of seven children. I grew up in Abington. I'm a graduate of Abington High School. I was a member of the high school band under Paul Smith when we had the big bands of the 70s, 60s and 70s. Did a lot of trips with the high school. Learned a lot from Paul Smith as teamwork, about teamwork. My father, who was one of the first men on the fire department, one of two permanent firemen to be named by the selectmen, also served on the Personnel Board, the Finance Committee, and then he started his own business. And this is how I got into the background of town work. Dad was sort of an entrepreneur of such. He bought his first excavating equipment in 1952, and we started doing work around the town here. As time went on from 1952 and us boys grew up, there was five of us, we all took place working in the business. We were taught everything about what we were doing as far as digging, working the equipment, what to do if there was a problem, and how to do it. We did most of the digging for the town of Abington over those years, all the way up into the early 80s. And that was from 1952. We didn't all work for Dad all those years, because some of us left, went in the service or what have you. I left and went into the oil business and worked in this area, so I've been in a lot of homes in the Abington area. In 1971, I was credited with saving the life of a three-year-old boy by pulling him out of a burning home on Washington Terrace. But while working for Dad, we were putting in roads for developers and doing the work, the actual work of building roads and building, digging foundations and the works. We did a lot of work in this area, in Abington, Whitman, Rockland, all over this sort of When I got married, I left town and worked, as I say, in the oil business, and after 20 years, became an operations manager for a company, which was having trouble staying afloat. I was able to work with the owner and bring that to a multimillion-dollar asset, which he was able to finally retire after many years. I was living in Holbrook for many years and was approached to join the Conservation Commission. I served for five years and learned as much as I could, and after learning that, I was asked, in approach, to run for the Planning Board. I served four and a half years on the Planning Board and helped write zoning laws which would affect multi-dwelling units, which is apartment units, and to work on building so that we would have enough 40B units. A lot of people take into the idea of 40B units, they go, "Oh, oh my God, we're letting in the poor, the unclean." There's a lot to 40B. We were able to look at block grants that were given out for repairing homes, which we did, and found that we could use them towards our 40B count. We went from 8% to 13% inside of two years, which is well over the number you have to have of 10%. Affordable housing is a dirty word usually in most towns. It doesn't have to be. But it's something that you have to reach, 10%. And I have had quite a bit of experience in doing that, along with working with builders who are building projects. My biggest asset on the Planning Board is not to worry about the builders, but to worry about the town, to take care of the town of Abington. I go in this position thinking to do, or promising to do, what is best for Abington, not what is best for the builder. The builder's gonna make his money one way or the other, but I have to protect Abington, and that's what I'm here to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we have some questions that have been submitted, and you made me think about it. Given the opportunity to the candidates to read these questions, I'm gonna ask a 40B question that's made me think after you both spoke briefly about it, because some of us aren't familiar with 40B. So be prepared at the end, the last question, to talk about what is 40B, and just to keep that in mind for you guys. Okay. Our first question, we start with Mr. Collins. What is your idea on raising affordable housing so that we may reach our limits? I assume the question means our limits of percentage of each town's required to have so much affordable housing?
Right.
So we'll start with Mr. Collins.
Sure. The requirement right now is that towns are encouraged to have 10% affordable housing in their communities, and otherwise, it makes it easier for developers to invoke 40B and to get around any zoning restrictions that the town may have, actually Conservation as well, restrictions that they may have. I think the 10% goal is a commendable goal, but the towns that really do well are the ones who take their destiny into their own hands and figure out how to make affordable housing work on their terms, what's best for their community. And I think that's what Abington needs to do. Last I checked, I think Abington had about 8.5% affordable housing. And when you talk about affordable housing, there's so many different options. There's senior units, there's units for the disabled. The main key to be considered affordable is it just needs to receive some sort of state subsidy or federal subsidy in order to be considered affordable. And I think that's one of the jobs of the Planning Board, is to make sure that we have a plan in place on how we're going to reach that goal in a manner that best fits the community. Otherwise, the town remains vulnerable to 40Bs, and as someone who's seen a lot of these projects and knows the problems with them, the town certainly doesn't want to be in a responsive mood to this issue. They want to be the ones that are in control.
Thank you. Mr. Jacob?
It is a battle that you, as a Planning Board member and as a planning board, should be sticking their necks out and taking charge of it. And I agree with you 100%. I mean, the Planning Board has to take charge now. It can't be put off any longer. And the easiest way I see of doing it is by writing a law for the town and getting it passed through the Attorney General's office. And when we were in the town, when I was in the town of Holbrook, we put together a law that any new multi-dwelling units had to have so much affordable housing in it. And it could be low income, it could be moderate income, but it had to be affordable. And it's very important that as a town, we push this through so that we have some say. If we don't have any say, they could, theoretically, they could build it in a swamp and fill that swamp in, and we're stuck with whatever is there. They could build it as tall as they want, and we don't have the equipment, the fire equipment, to take care of it. We need to have say, and that's what we need. And we need to work with the builders, and the builders need to work with us. And we need, we really have to be open to it, to take care of it, and this is where we have to go. Now, and like I said, in Holbrook, we wrote the law to work with the builders that would force them to build their units, and so many of, so much of that complex would have to be 40B. And they didn't fight it. They agreed with it. Unfortunately, other things entered into it called the recession, that nothing's been built, but it's, it's there for them to do. It's a good, good way to go, and everybody's happy, you know? They're not getting away from it. Just to correct something, because I just got the latest numbers, it's, we're at 7% in Holbrook.
10%?
Yeah. And, I mean, in Abington, and, you know, I talked to the town manager and asked him to look into the houses that they had, the block grants, which, these grants were used to repair houses and stuff, to see if we could get those used to go against our affordable housing, those houses, which is quite possible. It was, it's been done in other towns, and maybe we can do it here, which would bring the number up.
Okay. This is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay.
Is that your answer?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. A second question. Do you think Abington needs a new zoning bylaw to deal with the medical marijuana shop? Mr. Jacob, we'll start with you.
It amazed me when I came down 123 one day and I saw a tattoo parlor in Abington Center. Just amazed me. It does need, things like that, and a medical marijuana shop needs to be in a separate area, not just out in the middle of nowhere, or in the center of town. It needs to be in a place where it's, it's accessible, but not in a place where it's open to school kids or people from other towns that are gonna see it readily. I feel that way. I've seen too many things in my lifetime that maybe could have been better placed, should we say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Mr. Collins?
I have very mixed feelings about the topic in general. I don't like the idea of it being, of medical marijuana being considered medicine when it's, you know, not FDA-approved or regulated. But then again, there are a lot of FDA medications that are much more dangerous than marijuana is. So, I did work on the group to oppose the passage of it. My concern was more about how it was drafted and other administrative concerns. I think some of those have bared out, if you read the news of some of the problems they've had with the licensing. And last year, I did put together a draft bylaw proposal that the Planning Board, I think, considered, and I think they had another hearing this past March on a potential bylaw as well. The town needs to have some sort of zoning in place to handle this new industry. That's what it is. It's a new industry that doesn't, that our current bylaws do not account for. I fully understand that under state law, you can't just pass some exclusionary zoning that essentially prohibits an industry from moving into your town. So I think we need to do it in a way that, you know, protects our interests. We need to have a conversation as to where we want this sort of facility to go, not just the retail shop, but any sort of growing operation, whether it's, whether we feel it's appropriate on, in a commercial district. We want it only in an industrial district, perhaps out by Route 18 and 58, or down 123. Those are certainly the conversations we can have, and people are gonna have varying opinions on it, but we certainly need to pass something just to make sure that it's approved on the town's terms as well.
So basically, you're both saying you need a designated area, other than just somebody sprouting up like a mom-and-pop medical marijuana that's licensed, but you have to have it in a particular zone and, in a different area of the town?
One of, I mean, one of the reasons I think it would help is that you can put your own conditions on it, and that way, if you find out that the shop is, becomes a problem or isn't living up to its obligations, that you can yank that license, or you can yank the permit. And, you know, that way, you do have some control over what really is gonna be an unknown industry in your town.
Mr. Jacob?
I agree with that. You know, and the other thing I see too is, you know, they've had troubles with the licenses in some towns in this state, and it's, you know, we really gotta stay on top of it, both, not only our police department, but as a town. You know, there could be a lot of problems with it. It's something that bears watching. You know, they open one up, say, in an industrial park, someplace in town, and all of a sudden they see a lot of out-of-town or out-of-state business, somebody flips a card and says, "Here's my medical card," you know? I'm sure that the state's gonna have a law that says you can't sell to that, but if they are selling to that, then the place needs to be shut down, because we don't want, we don't want to be in that rat race. Right now, we have a corridor, and we're in it, so to speak. It's called Route 3, Route 24, 128, 95, you know, from, from the Mass Pike all the way around is a road, is a highway that connects all that. And we're in it, and, you know, years ago, you didn't see Abington in the, so much drugs in Abington. It was here, but we didn't know about it. You know, it was here, but now it's, it seems like every other day, you're reading something more about marijuana, marijuana bust, cocaine bust in Abington, and it scares me, you know? We got a lot of young families in town, and this whole thing is scary. You know, I don't know how you feel about it, but I'm sure it does bother you with the young child, you know? Would me.
Well, I know we're hearing more about it too also, because Chief Majewski and the Abington Police Office are pretty proactive and very responsive.
Sure.
When they hear of drug situations, and they're not hiding, putting their heads in the sand. They're saying, yes, it's out there, and we're trying to prevent it. And of course, we have four state highways coming right through here, Route 18, 139, 58, and 123. So a lot of people, as you say, are gonna be coming from other areas, coming through Abington. So it is something to be aware of, so. Okay, gentlemen, thank you. Question number three, we will start with Mr. Collins. What is your main concern when a developer comes into town to propose a new project?
I think the main concern is what is the short and long-term impact of this project going to be on the community? Because, you know, the developer's gonna have his own interests in getting it passed, but we're the ones that are gonna have to live with it long after he's already gone and cashed the check. So, when a developer appears before, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected and developer comes before the Planning Board and I'm on it, I have a, I think, a few questions that I would ask them, and it's, you know, what right do they have as a property owner? Every property comes with, you know, inalienable rights to do some sort of development on it. What is the basic that they're allowed to do? Does the proposal meet the stated bylaws and regulations of both the town and the state? How does it impact the butters and the surrounding neighborhood? That's always a big question to find out, what the impact is gonna be. And I think you can't just depend on what the testimony is. I think you have to go talk to the neighbors. You have to invite them in and find out what they really are, what the real concerns are. And then, if there are impacts, what are the mitigation steps that can be taken to make sure the project has the least amount of an impact as possible? And then finally, does the town benefit from saying yes? And I think if all those questions are answered correctly and answered appropriately, then you can move forward and say, yes, this is a project that's appropriate for the town.
Okay, Mr. Collins, thank you. Mr. Jacob?
I think the biggest thing I would like to see in that is that the Planning Board, you know, makes the contractor prove himself all through it, and this means site visits, going out and looking at what is being done. Also, you know, checking his history. What has he done in other areas, other towns? You know, we've accepted, I saw this happen before, where a guy comes in and promised the world, and people bought into it, and next thing, I know he's packing up and moving out of town, and the project's nowhere near done, and we end up pulling the barn. I don't want to see that happening. It's not a fun thing, and it's not done completely the way it should be. The builder actually took up all the manhole covers and grates and everything, put boards over it, and buried them, you know? You know, we need to protect ourselves. We need to know, what has this guy done in other areas? You know, where, what's his track record? You know? I mean, a guy can get bonds anywhere, basically, no matter how much he's willing to pay for interest or what have you, insurance. He will do it, but will he finish what he starts? That's one big thing, and that's, that comes back to what I said in the beginning. We need to protect the town. I don't care how much he spends to do the project, he's got to finish it. And that's what we're there for, is to make sure he does the job and finishes it. And we need somebody that can go out and inspect the roads, inspect the job that he's doing. If it has to be us, ourselves, then that's the way it has to be. Most Conservation Commissioners go out and, sorry. Most Conservation Commissions go out on site reviews. I don't know if they do in Abington, but most that I've had, had something to do with, go out on site reviews. And the reason they do that is to make sure that the contractors are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and that we need to do that as a Planning Board.
In conjunction with the Building Department, I assume?
Well, the Building Department doesn't check the roads.
Okay.
Checks houses.
Houses, right.
It's up to us to check the roads, even if we have to hire somebody at the cost to the developer.
Okay.
Which we have a right to do.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, question number four. We start with Mr. Jacob.
Oh, boy.
Do you have, what are your thoughts on what's going on now down at the South Weymouth Air Base, Southfield?
I said it before, and I'll say it again, it's a nightmare. What I would love to see is some industry and commercial-based building going on down there. What I'm afraid we're gonna see, if people don't wake up, see, it's not just town government. Matter of fact, it's, from what I understand, it's mostly federal and state government that has the say, not the towns. I fear we're gonna see just housing down there. And that's, that's a sad situation. It's a bad situation. They took the base, there was a base down there with the runways, they should have left it a runoff for Logan, for the small planes, the cargo planes. They would have been better off in the long run, bringing in cargo and stuff, and that would have brought industry into it. That's my thought, and I said it all the time. Or they could have put a convention center of some sort, and this was way back before they had the convention center in Boston, when they were talking about closing it. That was my thought way back then. Or a new pact for the Red Sox even, who cares? It would have been worth it, you know? Now what they have is a disaster. The saving grace for Abington is that most of the property that's in Abington is swamp, you know? And... And, but, we're still dealing with the state and federal government. And they can bury that swamp if they want to. So, what are we going to do? They say, go ahead and build all the housing. The two companies that have made promises, they're going to do this, that, and the other, they're house builders. They're not going to build another mall. We have a mall in, in Hanson, I mean, Hanover, and a mall in Braintree. We get a mall in Brockton. Why do we need another mall in Waymouth on Route 18? How many people are going to go there? It'd have to be something special. You know? They're not going, they're not going, they had no intentions of building that mall, in my eyes.
Wasn't the recession though part of the situation?
When all else fails for excuses, the recession's a good one. And I really think that they had no intentions of building anything other than housing. Because that's what they do.
Right.
That's it. Their main thing is building developments of houses.
Okay. Mr. Jacob, thank you. Mr. Collins?
I agree that I am not comfortable and happy with what's being, what's transpiring down in the airbase. You know, there's been some documentation about other concerns within terms of how tri-town's been run. But really, what this is, is developers trying to get out of their obligations. When the current owners bought the air station and the land, they knew what the obligations were. And so, now they're turning around and saying, well, we can't afford to do this. Then, they shouldn't have bought the property in the first place. So, clearly, what all this is, is just, it's a developer company who wants better terms for its own project. And I think Mr. Jacob's correct, that they basically just want to do housing as much as possible, because they know it'll sell. I think we still need a mixed-use development down there with commercial and industrial. It's only a couple miles off of Route 3. We see industry moving into places, you know, much more removed from Boston and Quincy. I think it's still a viable location. I think you just need owners who care, and who want to make the project succeed. I don't know if these guys do. And, you know, I would very much be interested to find out how the negotiations continue over the next few weeks. But in the end run, I think Abington needs to protect its own interests. And at the very least, if it's just going to be sold off in tract land, then Abington needs to be ready and have a plan for what it's going to do if those acres of land come back to the town.
Okay, thank you. Those were all the original questions we had. But as you guys, gentlemen, were speaking, it made me think of others. One question, one, two, three, four. So, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Collins. You mentioned the marijuana zoning bylaws, et cetera. We have, I can't think of the, the smokes, Brennan Smoke Shop, I think it's called Ashes and Ashes, they changed the name. What about the paraphernalia, that's been a small issue in town, about paraphernalia that's sold at these stores? Should that be zoned, or is it zoned? And if not, should it be zoned? I'll start with Mr. Collins.
That issue has been in debate for 20 years. I remember there was, you know, 10, 15 years ago, there was a big debate, because there was a shop in, I think Pembroke, or Hanover, that was essentially a head shop. And the police would break in, would go in, and they'd seize items. And I know there's a number of cigar and tobacco stores that sell other paraphernalia that they can argue is a water pipe, but really, it's for marijuana use. You know, in some ways, I don't think that's what the concern is. The concern, the public, any public safety concern, zoning concern, I don't think surrounds whether or not something is a glass pipe, or whether or not it's a water bong, or anything else. I think it's more the, you know, any danger concern it may have on, from the clientele, from the product standpoint. People aren't going to be breaking into, you know, a smoke shop to get a glass pipe. They'd be more interested in any sort of product that they may have. So, I don't think there necessarily needs to be a law focusing on paraphernalia. I think it's the product-based, really, as well as the clientele, hours of operation, marketing, advertising, public safety, security. Those are more of the issues that we need to watch out for.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacob?
I agree with him. You know, I've been in those shops, and, you know, I don't think I've ever really noticed the bongs and stuff, because I'm not looking for them. So, now that you brought it up, yeah, they're there. You know, but I just don't go looking for them, so I really don't pay attention to them. It's the clientele that goes in there is basically people 21 and up. Occasionally, you get somebody that's down around 18 in there, but usually, they go into someplace else, like a gas station. They pick them up in gas stations and what have you. You know, you don't see too many young people going in them. I like good Cuban skies, and I can't get them. So, you know, the only time I get them is when I go on a cruise.
Sure.
You know, so.
They leave the confines of the US borders.
Yes, that's it, you know? Other than that, I don't see them as a problem. Anybody going in to steal something is probably more after the product that they're selling, actually selling, you know, than those things.
Thank you. I'll do one last question, and it's about 40Bs. That's what I told you we'd end with. And one of the concerns is, if you could, in your answer, discuss what locations maybe in Abington, could 40B developments? First of all, what is a 40B? What constitutes a 40B? And then, if it could be developed in Abington, where could it be developed? And lastly, sewer, having experiences on the sewer commission, how can they develop a 40B when we're already at maximum sewer? So, I'm going to start, please, with Mr. Jacob.
40B is for low and moderate-income families.
And it's a state law?
It's a state law. It's the anti-snobbery law. That's what it is.
Sure.
It is a good program for some. You say we're at the max. Well, I worked in, on the, I worked on the zoning law for the, along with another gentleman, for the bowling alley in Holbrook. And they became quite inventive with their sewerage problem, their sewerage issue, because they were maxed out in Holbrook. Not maxed out, they had to earn points, fix all the leaks in town, and what have you. And they came up with their own sewerage system, which would, was like a biosphere. Biosphere, yeah, get it right. And they would take care of their own sewerage on-site.
On-site, okay.
On-site. It was not going to be dumped into the local river or anything. It was quite a system that was designed for that project by, I want to say, UMass or MIT. I think it was MIT. And it was proven to work.
How many units roughly are we talking about when you talk about 40Bs? Roughly, I mean, I'm sure it varies.
Well, I don't know, I have to look at the law again. But it used to be that if you put X amount of units on the top floor, or mixed in, 10% of, say, 10% of the units in the building, let's say 10% in the building, then that whole building was considered 40B. I don't think they do that now. They're trying to get away from it.
The way, one of the changes they made a few years ago was, if you build an apartment building with rental units, and you have, you know, you're 25, it's 25%. It's 25% if it's moderate, it's 10% if it's low-income, I think is the way they separate it out. So, or it's 20%, I forget which it is. But if the, if, you know, let's say you built a 100-unit apartment building, and you had 25 rental units were affordable, all 100 would count towards your housing inventory as affordable. That was supposed to be a little bit of a carrot-and-stick approach.
Yeah.
I think they still do that. But to me, that just shows what a joke the law is at times, where, you know, there's 75 ghost rental units that don't actually exist.
Sure.
Anywhere, and that's supposed to be a good way of encouraging affordable housing.
It used to be, I know it used to be 10%. That, you know, so much of the building had to be low-income, and that whole building would count. And like you said, it was ghosts. You know? And that's how they got away with it. Like, you take the Ramblewood project over in Holbrook. Not that whole project is low-income, but 10% of it is, so they count the whole thing.
Project as low-income.
Yeah. Where would I like to see it?
If, yeah, if, I mean, I'm putting you on the spot, I realize that you guys weren't prepared.
Well, if we have to do it, I'd like to see it done under our terms. And, you know, there's places where it could go.
You don't have to be specific, then? But it could be done?
It could be done. You know, one of the things, they're talking about building new schools in this town.
Right.
What are they going to do with the old schools? Town could recoup some of their money by selling those old schools to be turned over.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Jacob.
The, the part that makes people nervous about 40B is that it makes any developable lot capable of housing a 40B development. So, any single-family lot could become a multi-family lot, just because if they put one unit in there, or they meet whatever the quota is, the rest of it, the rest of the zoning guidelines basically can get tossed out. So, you know, you're talking either a single-family lot, you're talking anywhere from, I think developers tend to like an acre at least, but anywhere is, it becomes a target that is ripe for development. I would like to see, you know, if we can, if we can, you know, take control of this, I'd like to see some more development around the train station, because, take advantage of the 40R designation, and that can actually bring money back into the town from the state to help support it.
Excuse me, what can you say? Explain what 40R is?
Sure. It was transit-oriented development. It was to encourage communities to have smart growth developments around transit hubs, like, you know, commuter rail stations. I think it's, right now, it's, the property has to be within a half-mile around of a transit hub. And if you can do that, the state will actually give a grant to the town to help offset some of the development costs. I think Kingston did it locally. I don't, I don't remember if it got built, but I know that they applied under 40R for, for some state assistance.
Would Woodlands Way be considered?
It could have been. I don't remember when it was built.
I don't mean to fish, but that's a type of development.
Yeah, exactly. That I think we have a lot of properties around there that could be a good site. You know, I think that the more we can do it, the smarter we can do our development, the less this becomes an issue. And, you know, I think, basically, just, you know, if we can take control of this, we don't have to worry about others coming in and putting something that we don't find, you know, appropriate for the site. Because there's very little evidence of the courts or appeals boards siding with the towns in these decisions. And one of the Supreme Court rulings was about projects denied because of sewer and because of water. And they said that's not a reasonable excuse, that towns have to be prepared to handle those concerns. So, that is just, it's not a way to prevent it.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, I thank you so much for your questions, your answers, and your responses. You both have quality and experience behind you, and I wish you the best of luck in your election. We're going to do a closing statement from each candidate, and then I'll just give a brief synopsis at the end of Election Day, and we'll start with a closing statement from Mr. Collins.
Thank you very much for organizing this. I appreciate it. The planning board plays a major role in the future of a community, not just in terms of going over projects, but also, where do we want parks and schools, and what does our master plan look like? And what is our, what's our sewer and water needs? And I think I have some great experience and great abilities that would help with that process. And I really look forward to the opportunity to serve as the next member of the planning board. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Jacob?
The planning board is probably the second most important board in town. A lot of people will disagree with me, but it is. Because it does the planning of, of the town for building, and what comes into town and what doesn't. My opponent has a lot of quality and a lot of good ideas, and I won't take it away from him. But I have practical experience. I've been through it. I've served on two different boards. That gives me a lot of knowledge. And I would like the chance to give that back to Abington. I grew up here. I've come back to town. I love it here. I never wanted to leave Abington. But I'm back, and I just want to help out. I have the time. I'm retired, and I can always be called upon. So, you know, either way, you will not lose with either one of us. We have a lot of the same thoughts, and we're two good guys just trying to make our town better. And that's all I get to say. But I am here all the time, and I'd like the chance to serve Abington. I owe it to the town for what they did for me growing up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob.
Thank you.
While I have you, do you have a website, or an email address, or anything at all advertising that people can reach you at?
I can be reached at jake4654@yahoo.com if you have any questions.
Mr. Collins, do you have a?
I do have a simple website. It's collinsforabington.com.
Well, gentlemen, thank you very much for your time and your answers. I appreciate it. For those who don't know, the policy's on April 26th, it's Election Day. Town, its voting is at the high school, open 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That particular day, the Lions Club is also hosting a pancake breakfast, that if you can attend, would be great, the Lions Club, there's so much for the people in town. We also have Rosie Walls and Friends of the Abington Public Library, they have a book sale at the public library here in town, across from town hall. Books, hard copies, I believe, are on sale for a dollar. Paperbacks usually are on sale for half a dollar. We also have opening day of Little League, so people will be parading. So, please drive safely around town that day. One cause I always push is to try to remember the Abington Food Pantry. Any donations that you can make to them would be greatly appreciated. They're located on the St. Bridget's Complex, 158 on Plymouth Street. Also, try to remember our soldiers who are in active duty at this point throughout the world. Please keep them in mind. And, you know, thank your neighbors, and try to be cooperative and helpful to your neighbors. This is Easter week, the Easter season. Mondays, the marathon. Just keep in mind, all the people have made sacrifices to improve the quality of life for you and your families, such as these children taking time from their busy schedules, and people running for selectmen, and people running for school committee, et cetera. So, again, thank you very much, and thanks for attending, all the audience. I want to appreciate your kindness and your ability to keep quiet. Thank you. And have a great day, and we'll be in touch.
Good luck.
I think we did, good luck to you. I think we did pretty good. We sound almost...